Newport Special Counsel meeting is called to order at 5:00 PM. Welcome, Councilmember.
Thank you very much.
You know we were watching you walk in. No way were you getting away with that one. Present at the meeting are Councilmembers President Chris Fashon, Councilmember Charbonneau, Councilmember Curtis, Councilmember Ufford Chase, Treasurer James Johnson, City Manager Jonathan Delabria. On line is the Controller, Mr. Tarian. Anybody else? Second item on the agenda additions/deletions. President Fashon?
No, thank you.
Councilman Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilman Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilman Ufford Chase?
No, thank you.
Treasurer James Johnson? City Manager?
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to increase to the city of Newport's line of credit. Before we go into an actual attempted vote, we're going to open this up so that the council can have a discussion. And I'm going to ask the Treasurer if you wouldn't mind beginning the discussion to say what's needed and why.
Okay, so I intended to have this on Monday night, but now that the bank got sick, couldn't do it. So we've had a small crew working on this ever since over at the bank to get this ready for tonight. Because it can't wait until the next council meeting. We're off the line of credit from a million to a million seven because we need money to operate until tax money starts coming in. Like the original one, we don't need it, we won't lose it, and we take what we need. For example, we had $470,000 in the thing, and they just wrote, sent out checks for $420,000. So that would be $50,000. That won't get us till tax money starts coming in. So the interest rate on this is the same as it was in the original, it's just to increase the amount, is all there is.
Okay, so just so that I make sure we're understanding. So the 5.45% is what the former rate was?
Yeah.
So okay, so that's going to be, if we do agree, it would be on the 1.7. That would be the entire increase?
Yeah.
For that.
And we only pay interest on what we take. So basically, that's it. The only thing I talked about this is basically our only option. Until tax money and water bills start coming in, we've got to have money to pay bills and operate on.
So I just want the council to know that on the advice of council, there are more options, of course, but on the advice of council, there were two directions that you could go. You could obtain a temporary loan and remove the tax revenue, or we could call a special meeting, as we have, and authorize a loan or bond to cover any general fund deficit. So I just want you to know that. But now let's go into some discussions. Councilmembers have anything, questions, discussions?
Just minimal right now. What did we just spend $420,000 on?
This morning, as of this morning, I had $460,000 in the bank, all right? But I just made out enough checks, enough checks to me, I had $420,000 of that. Now leave us about $40,000 to go until the tax revenue starts coming in. That will do it.
So the checks were the warrants that were cut on first versus an other?
Yeah. All the warrants are up to date.
And that includes all payroll?
Yeah.
Are you done? Or you want to keep going?
I have a lot of questions.
Yeah, so you want to?
No.
Okay, let's let, you go first. Go, Kathy Johnson.
Just wondering if you can tell us how, what you expect in terms of rejected payback time? Like, is this, a loan of credit means we expect to pay it back relatively quickly? A line of credit, right?
Yeah, it all has to be paid back by June 30th.
By June 30?
Yeah. And we're going to collect, I would guess, four and a half, five million dollars between now and when the tax payments come in, the next water thing. That would be plenty to pay this.
So...
We should, we should have a half million dollars left to begin next year with.
So as it stands right now on the line of credit, the entire million has been used? And so it would be, the drawdown of the additional $700,000 would begin to be used to cover until the tax money came in? So then, in your anticipation is that, how much of the million seven could be paid back when the taxes come in? Do you know?
Hopefully all of it.
You think that that's realistic?
I think there'll be enough to pay the school and pay this whole thing back when the tax money comes out. A little bit left over.
Councilmember? Do you have any question?
Which one?
Any councilmember who wants to. Mr. President?
So I guess my question is just, how did this gap come about that we are this close to bearing out?
Well, because we want to collect taxes twice a year. So you've got this whole, basically six month period to pay stuff between tax revenue time. Obviously, we get water and sewer, but we're not getting that much, should be. There's several things. I mean, the money is spent, we haven't got reimbursed for it yet. I mean, the overdue taxes and overdue water and sewer, all fits into the, I think, there's several reasons why.
But you don't predict, if we go this route, that we'll use the 1.7, the total of 1.7?
I suspect the next year, bond can do the 1.7 to $2 million of line of credit.
Your end. Okay, so...
Good.
So Monday night, we had a meeting. Last night, most of us were at the fire station. And then I was told we're going to have a meeting tonight. I probably was up half the night thinking about how in the hell we got here. What I'm going to say is probably going to offend Mr. Johnson. It's probably going to upset him. I got to work today at 12:20. Every single place that I go, before I decided to run for this seat, maybe one or two people a day would approach me. Now that people are, at least in my world, are more engaged, I have five or six people every day telling me things. People from the inside that work here, people that just want to know what the hell is going on. So in watching old council videos, Mr. Johnson absolutely prided himself on the fact that we, every year, you would ask the council, whoever was sitting here, for a million dollar line of credit. And you were absolutely proud that you never had to use that.
That's correct.
Now, so I got a whole bunch of notes. So I've heard from the public, well, you lost the leachate money. Anybody with half a brain should have known that, and I was on the outside, I had no affiliation with the city, but anybody following that should have known that Act 250 was going to not let poison be put into the lake. And that's gone. So anybody with half a brain should have anticipated this loss. And that's what I keep hearing. We lost the leachate money. Yeah, yeah, we did, but there should have been a plan for that way before it was gone. We're working on water and sewer increases. And this is what's going to upset Mr. Johnson. But I probably know more than some, I'm not sure. This is what I've been told, doesn't mean I'm 100% right. I found that in the little over a year I've been here, I've only got one email that said, from Mr. Johnson, that said, I'm going to be asking, I think, $300,000 on our line of credit. Mr. Johnson doesn't have to answer to me, but we're all on the same team. It would be really important and really great if we knew what was going on. So what I've been told is that ARPA money that we got was mixed in the general fund and was being spent. That got put back. The school money that we collect for taxes is probably, unless Jonathan's fixed it, still in our general fund, being used when it shouldn't be. Mr. Johnson recently has tried on his own to go and get a bond, but scarce the living hell out of me. I don't know why he needs a bond, he's insured. Last Monday, I did not sign warrants, nor will I sign warrants. I'm scared, I'm not scared of anything, but I'm scared to death of what the hell is going on. So we are a million dollars on our line of credit. In fact, if it was my choice right now, there'd be an expense freeze immediately. Taking a line of credit for more money is just kicking the can down the road. There's, I don't, I'm not saying anything downstairs is illegal, but I don't. I'm going to find out. For those that don't know, I talked to the mayor today, I think we talked two or three times. We're not best friends, we're on the same team, and we're here to fix what's wrong. And to me, even if I'm the only one, this is just way wrong. There's no discussion about it, there's really nothing. And what I found is the more questions I ask, the more digging, the more resistance, the more concern, the more chaos. I will tell you that every single item in the annual report, cemetery commission, Niles Fund, I will be going through with the mayor, she probably will do most of the work. But I am going to find out where every penny is, where it came from, where it was spent. Cemetery commission under other, other, that's $10,000. That doesn't sit well with me. What the heck is other? So that's really all I have to say. I'm not going to, I'll tell you ahead of time, I'm not voting, even if I'm the only one, for a credit line increase. What is that? $4,000 to $5,000 a month more money? Where's that money coming from? Where are we getting $4,000 or $5,000 more? It's just going deeper and deeper and deeper and deeper. And everyone that I encounter now, since probably January, where I had a couple hundred people talk to me before election, now it's probably 500. Every single place I go, whether it's a pick and shovel, and it doesn't mean employees there, it's just people I run into, the post office, Walmart, lumber store, minimark, gas station, every day. And they're asking me what's going on, and my answer is, I don't know, but we are working on it. And that's really all I have to say. I will not vote for any increase.
So I'm just going to pull one section that you spoke about, the Treasurer's application for a bond. We're going to actually be putting that on the next agenda item. The Charter says that there could be a bond, but it doesn't have to be, it's up to the council. The Treasurer is covered by the insurance specific. The Treasurer went to get a bond because he thought everybody was getting a bond and wanted to fall into there. The application that the Treasurer did, in my mind, he applied for a far larger bond that I think the council would even approve, even if we wanted to have the Treasurer have a bond. So that I'm going to carve out of this discussion. That's an entirely different area. His bonding has really nothing to do with this.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, but I just wanted...
I do have one more thing, and maybe you'll...
No, you can't. I just wanted to make sure that that's a different...
Maybe you'll bring it up, maybe you won't.
Go ahead.
But Monday night at 6:29, I had two piles of paper that came in front of me. The very first meeting more than a year ago, I said to Mr. Fashon, what the hell is this? He says, we have to sign this. Line of credit bill, phone bill, cable bill, and separately is a payroll. So he explained it very well. But I didn't sign it. And I cannot look at something, right? If my job is to protect the citizens, we all took an oath. How faithfully, at 6:29, can I look at that while you're starting the meeting and make a fair and honest decision? Something different has to be done with that.
And to that, we, the City Manager and I have discussed that, and we are putting that on the agenda for, when is it, the 15th?
Yep.
The 15th. And you will see the whole consent agenda that we're putting together with those processes for you all to vote on. And this way, you'll be able to get those documents ahead of time in the packets.
In the pack.
So the goal is accounts payable, payroll, vendor permits, liquor licenses, tobacco licenses, everything will be in the packet on Friday. So you will have that information with the rest.
Provided you all vote for that. Once we, but we're going...
My only question is, it's not going to be the whole, it's just going to be the top sheet, or is it every single copy?
It won't be the invoices, correct? Just kind of that cover sheet?
Then I can analysis.
I just don't want to break it.
But yes, I think if you want, like, if you're like, hey, this invoice looks weird on the cover sheet, you could pull the invoice, but no, it's just going to be that cover.
But, and that will be on the next agenda, but it does pertain to this line of credit. So, any other comments, Councilmember?
How can we prevent this kind of jump in the future?
I don't know. You have to have money to operate between tax collections dates. You have to have money to operate.
Sure, go right ahead.
So I mean, taking, most municipalities need a tax line of credit. It's not uncommon, right? For an example, prior to coming to Newport, I was in Cambridge. For this year, we had a budget a little smaller than Newport's, and we requested 1.75 million as a line of credit. So to give you that comparison, right, of this isn't uncommon, most municipalities need that funding to get to the next tax installment date. My guess is that we just always use kind of a blanket million dollars, and this year, this wasn't enough. So I think, you know, part of that is working with the bank and putting together cash flow projections and figuring out, you know, which month we need money the most and kind of estimating it that way. And I don't know, you know, when Jim, you put together your line of credit, if the bank asked us to do that, or what that process would look like. But really kind of looking at the next year's budget and figuring out which month we're going to need the, we're going to hit that.
Right, and it goes by a percentage of the budget. I'm going to open it up after I put the motion to...
Correct. And it goes a certain percentage of the prior year's budget, and absolutely.
Correct. Right, so to answer the President's question, I think part of the policies that are being put together are to make this be avoided going forward. And that's what we're working on. And we're working on, the Treasurer to figure out tax timing, collection. The Treasurer's already set up the liability account for the school. So we are going to take these best practices, and we're all working together to figure it out, because it can't just keep going on, you can't. And there, and the policies, as we said, that are being put in place are stopping borrowing from account A to account B. We're also looking at the allocation of salaries, et cetera, so we know how the funds are actually going to be affected. And so it's being looked at, but we still have to figure out the revenue sources. And so what's happening right now is a huge catch-up of like, at least five years, right? At least. At least. So, go ahead. I just wanted to...
I agree with everything Jonathan said, and I understand a city needs a line of credit. As I said, Mr. Johnson prided himself on the fact that we never needed it, and I still don't know what happened.
Mm-hmm. So I have, so a question that I have, because you brought up expense freeze. Right? So what would that look like? What expenses? We'd have to know which expenses, timing-wise, could be pushed back, how much it would save, how it would affect our credit ratings, who...
I know.
No, I'm, I'm just bringing the discussion, okay? So that people understand. Not that it couldn't happen, I just want to hear, okay? So of course, my, I'm thinking you're not talking payroll or benefit.
Not payroll, it's not the employees.
Right, it's just vendors. So we'd have to say, okay, what project might be stopped, right? If that happens? For how long? What contractual rights are out there? So we would have to look at what contracts we have in place, see what the terms are. So we would really have to know from the Treasurer and from the City Manager what that effect would be.
Yep.
Because that's not something, I mean, I'm not saying you can't do a freeze, you could do a freeze. But the thing is, what are going to be the ramifications? But I'm asking, does anybody know? Right now, I don't think we've done a deep enough dive, I don't believe.
I wish I knew why, but...
Right, well, this is just a general discussion.
Like I said before, I think it's a combination of a lot of things. You've got union contracts that went out, you've got grants, the money we spent hasn't been reimbursed for, you've got delinquent taxes that are still out there, you've got water.
Treasurer, do we know how much grant money has not been reimbursed yet? Do we know?
I have to look at the trial balance.
But you'd be able to get that, regardless of how the vote goes today?
What grants are out there, and what the...
We need to do that.
What's been spent on what grants, and I can tell what's been reimbursed.
I know there's roughly $100,000 from Stone Garden that was in these warrants that will be reimbursed.
Okay.
It's the only one I know off the top of my head.
And X amount of money did come in, right? That covered, yes, Monday's warrants, right?
The one?
You did get money in Monday that's already been accumulated after the warrants went out, so there's already money that flew.
Yeah, yeah, we got, like, for example, we've got $147,000 in tax escrow payments.
Right, okay. Right, so...
The big money won't start coming in until the first of May.
Right. Right, we know May's...
Hundreds of thousands of dollars that...
We know May is a big day on the water sewer, the everything, right?
It's like November, it's like the November. So you're collecting, you're spending money from July 1st to November 15th, right? You've got to collect money to, you know, if you're overspending. When that goes away, school goes away, that catches up, now you've got to spend the money from November 15th to May 15th.
So my question, going back to Councilmembers' references, are the ARPA funds, we've got them all back?
Yeah, oh yeah.
We spoke about the bond, school money liability, can't...
It's set up.
It's set up. What's the, what, there was another one that you asked about?
Warrants, but that's...
The warrants is an overwhelming issue, which we're going to deal with.
ARPA, school money, bond, it's been discussed warrants. It's the amount of money.
The amount of money?
Where is this money coming to pay the interest?
Right, so let's deal with that. So, and it's a valid question, okay? We're going to have X amount of dollars over the next, thousands of dollars over the next several months until money comes in. How is that going to be covered? Anybody got an idea?
Hell, the invoice is going to be covered too.
The interest. So like...
With all that?
So we're going to use the loan itself to pay the interest?
Yeah, that's a part of doing business.
No, but I just want to know.
The longer, you've got to pay interest on it.
Right, but I'm saying the anticipation is that you'll take, say, $700,000, you may need $500,000, and the other 200, we use to pay then.
Yeah, the interest will, yeah, the interest will know that, you pay the invoice and the interest.
So it's a roll, it's a rolling number, that's, so I want everyone to understand how it's going to happen, so you can make an intelligent decision. Yes, Councilmember?
So how much did we budget for interest payments?
Nothing, probably. Could run a big volume, I think.
So this is all off budget? All of the interest payment is going to be on budget?
That's off budget.
And the other thing, the money we don't have on water and sewer bills to make, the money that we're not, should be collected enough there. General fund is paying that out also, so that's another piece of the puzzle.
Sorry, say that again.
Well, when we collect water and sewer, historically, we haven't been collecting enough.
Right.
All right, so we'll have to pay, so the general fund is paying the bills for the water and sewer. So that's another piece of the puzzle. That's another.
That's a different animal.
That's a different animal.
It doesn't help us this year, my, to budget for interest going forward.
Correct. Right. Okay, so any further discussion? Are you going to make a motion and then kind of open it back? If you want to continue to talk here. Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the city's increasing its line of credit to 1.7 million dollars?
I'll move it.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Comments?
As a...
Please, because we don't have a mic.
Pam, City of Newport, as a taxpayer, if I ran my home in the way that it's being suggested, even though it's quote "normal practice," to take a 1.7 million dollar loan for the joy of paying back $60,000 in interest a year, because we haven't figured out how to work a budget in a way that is meaningful, makes zero sense to me. That seems crazy, absolutely crazy.
I just want to ask the, okay, you go first. Yeah, because it's fair, it's yours.
Yeah, I understand the concept of a line of credit. And I too listened in the meetings, Clark, to Jim at the time saying every time he asked every year for a renewal of this line of credit for a million dollars, that we never used it, we never spent it. So up until about, I would say, two or three years ago, but I could be wrong in the, in the number of years that Jim's been saying that, there it was. Nobody used, they did not use that line of credit. Now, unless things change drastically, if I've got a line of credit, and I don't use it, 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 the first year that some problems might arise, they're not huge, you know, maybe I use of a million dollar line of credit, 50,000. And then the next year, if things are going a little sour, I use 100,000. But to go from, we never use it, we never use it, we never use it, I have to ask what monies you were using so that you didn't use the line of credit? Because you can't go from not using it to needing 1.7 million dollars in a line of credit. So what hasn't really, I know, I know water and sewage, well, at most, that was like 300,000 or something like that, five, and now it's possibly gotten up to 500,000. Nothing explains how you go from no use to 1.7 million in three years. And maybe my years are off? Tell me. But the math doesn't work logically.
Okay. So I'm going to hear everybody, and then I'm going to bring it back here and address some of these.
Jennifer Beerly, resident Newport, Vermont. I mean, this is the result of a perfect storm. And you had union agreements that settled with the Public Works and with the police that raised salaries substantially. From my experience with school budgets, the biggest line item expense is always your personnel, you know? And so with those increases that took place, that's, I would, my gut is telling me that's where a lot of your money is located, in terms of the increases on the expenses. I also believe, and people here at the meeting can correct me if my recollection is inaccurate, but those agreements went into effect during this past fiscal year, and I don't think our previous City Manager Laura Dolgan budgeted for them in any way. And so you have this big increase in expenses, but the revenue wasn't budgeted appropriately. Then you add to that double-digit inflation on everyday garden variety expenses that just adds into it, and here we are. I don't think that the tax increase on Ms. Dolgan's last year was much more than 3%. I think the 15% increase that went in this year is more representative of what the real landscape is, so I don't suspect that this is going to be carried forward. I think it's more of an isolated event. I also know from my experience with school budgets that whenever you have this twice-a-year or once-a-year influx of cash, that it is standard operating procedure to have some sort of... that it is standard operating procedure to have some sort of carryover loans or lines of credit or whatever to get you through until the next installment comes in. So I, I appreciate Mr. Curtis, your concern over this. Um, I would just maybe take a deep breath and, and say it, it might not be as bad as it appears on the surface from a standpoint of looking forward. Right now, in this year, I agree, it's kind of alarming. But moving forward, I don't, I'm not seeing that it's gonna be a problem over and over again. I think that this really is a perfect storm of previous city manager inflation and lack of budgeting and, um, the failure to, to, to raise the additional revenues for the, for the contracts with the employees.
Um, I say, here we are, we're at this point, and backs to line of credit, if we have to carry a balance, will actually help us to stay under the thirty percent rule if we have to carry a balance, to keep our credit rating high. So if, if we need it, I mean, who hasn't needed a credit card in a pinch? And if you use it wisely, you can get past a point. I, I agree with you, it's not the way we wanna run things, believe me. My ears equally on fire on that issue, but here we are, we're at this point. And so I think the higher line of credit from a credit standing point of view, if you have to carry a balance, you wanna stand in the thirty rule, you don't wanna carry a balance of more than thirty percent, so that higher credit limit will give the city an ability to keep a higher credit rating. And so it may not, in a, in a weird way, be such a bad thing temporarily, but to find out the root of it is essential and going forward, and also to put in for the interest is essential for the payments, as part of the payments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna just pull some of the elements I heard and then we'll bring it back here. So I think Councilman Curtis did address where was the million dollars being used from. Uh, remember, some were used from the ARPA funds, they were using different funds to roll, so we know that there was that history. So, um, it's not a missing one point seven million dollars. It was a, um, borrow from Peter A. account to Peter B. account until Peter A. account said, I'm not lending to you anymore. And then we, literally, the new council came in and said, let's put these policies in place because we're dealing with historical issues. Not approving historical, the way it was done. But so it's not like, okay, we're missing a million seven. But it was used from specific accounts that we shouldn't be touching, and we're not going to do that anymore. Um, regarding, um, Ms., Ms. Bierling, okay? With the, um, budgeting process and, you know, it is a normal process to have lines of credits and we are playing catch-up. But you hit a very important point, you spoke of expenses. And the council member and I were talking about expenses and we, I've spoken to the city manager, we are going to do a deep dive to make sure that the expenses are appropriate expenses, there is no more expenses that the city might be taking. So we are looking at that, the same way we looked at other areas, expenses, the allocation of expenses and what are appropriate business expenses is, is a top priority. Um, because that is going to be on a going-forward basis, something that's going to get us to some real numbers. So, um, I, and I think, you know, everybody always looks at revenue, 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 but expenses are also something we're, we are definitely looking at. Um, yes, bond rating and line of credit rating is very important. Um, so I think the key, my other question is maybe Treasury, you'll be. Um, if we prepay, like if we pay back, like say, you borrow seven hundred and you pay the seven hundred, okay? Is the interest going, do we have to accumulate that anyway, or does it stop? So when we pay it down and we, say we owe nothing on the loan, what are the terms?
When you pay it down, the interest stops.
It stops, okay. So if you've accumulated twenty-four thousand dollars in interest, that's it, it stops if you pay it back?
If we've got a million out there and we pay back five hundred thousand, it just drops the five, interest on five hundred thousand.
Well, then it's. Going full.
Going full.
Right, but I'm saying, so you can prepay without penalties?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh yeah, you can pay it off anytime you want.
Okay, with no penalties?
You gotta get, gotta get the tax money in to pay it off.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what I normally do, as soon as enough tax money comes in, I, I, I may not pay the whole thing at once, but I'll pay half a million dollars here. 'Cause I gotta make sure I keep enough to pay for the, pay the warrants coming forward.
Yeah, well, this is a tough discussion, but it's a discussion that we have to have. Um.
I can, I can, I can, I understand what Clark's saying, but I can show you, um, there's no money missing. We just don't take enough revenue in to pay the expenses in advance, it all comes after the fact.
It's a tiny issue.
And if there was anything wrong, the auditors would have found it wrong on the bank account.
Well, right, and I don't think that is.
And the whole scenario, there's two signatures required for every check. Every invoice comes in upstairs in the manager's office, approves it, comes down, and we pay it, that's the system.
And we have been putting in, um, separation of duties, we are working very closely now, the city manager and I, on doing the separation of duties, who's gonna be doing the reconciliations, who's going to be going to which accounts and making sure that those policies are in place, yes?
So my thought too, right, you know, we're talking today about a, a line of credit with just budgeting for interest. In this case, we didn't budget for interest. I would encourage the council, myself and the treasurer, to look at an ICS arbitrage arrangement so that we're earning interest on that money that sits, sits, sits in the account.
On the money that sits.
And typically, that money that we earn will be greater than what the interest is, so we may even make money on that ICS.
Right, we just have to watch the timing of that as well.
Of the interest rate, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because otherwise we could kill it.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so agreed. And then that's what we are going to be looking at, all of these things, and it's not just one person, it's all of us, and then the council's input and so. All right, so any further discussion from us, the council members?
I just wanna respond to Ms. Bierling's comment. Um, Mr. Vashon, I were on the DPW negotiating team. And that short time that I was here, Ms. Dolgan, we were talking numbers that are, were going up a lot. She assured us, I don't know what Chris remembers, but she assured us she had budgeted for these increases. So my only issue is I'm not saying there's missing money.
Well, they're, we don't know.
But how did we get here and with no alerts? And to me, we're just going further. I understand, we need a line of credit to run a business, but it's just getting further and further and further. I believe there's some issues with expenses. And I, I, I'm not hell-bent on it, but I still would support some kind of expense freeze. Obviously not payroll, but it's just not getting any better, no. That's all.
I'm gonna add to that because I'm, one point something I agree, but I'm not sure I'm comfortable with. But I do know that there's a lot more ice going forward, processes looking forward. I do sense that if this problem is identified, we can kinda nip it in the butt before it continues. My head is at continuing forward with this, so.
So we're picking one point seven, right?
That was the number in the motion, that's the number that the treasurer asked.
Right, but, but how, that's fine, if it was a hundred million.
Yeah.
How do we get to that, how do we get to the number? I don't have, I don't have one piece of, I don't have a memo, I don't have an email, I don't have anticipated expenses.
Okay.
We have nothing.
So let's find out. So how did you come up with?
I think, I think the simple answer is we're, we're spending ahead of what we take then. We spend money before we get the money.
Yeah.
And that's what the line of credit's for.
But I think the councilman wants to know, how'd you come up with seven hundred thousand dollars? As the additional number?
Well, that, that seven hundred thousand dollars, I mean, we're gonna use it, and they only be three, Jonathan and I talked about it. Was it one point seven, at least, you know, if we're gonna wind up using one point three or four, great, 'cause you're only paying interest on what you take. We just wanna, we got three months to go to the end of the year, we don't wanna be on June fifteenth and be out of money. You know what I'm saying? We wouldn't, we wouldn't be because of taxes, but that, that's the logic of it.
Okay, so the seven hundred thousand dollars wasn't done as, um, a tie-in to any, um, needed expense monies? It was kind of a budget of dollars over X amount of months to get us to May fifteenth?
Correct.
Is that correct? Does that count that?
Sort of, I still don't understand how we got here. A memo, an email, last I knew we were three hundred thousand dollars, now we find out we're maxed out at our million. There's no communication.
So I think.
It would help, right? Not telling anybody what to do, but it certainly would help, so we knew where we were at.
So here's a, wait, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What I need, I keep the manager's office abreast, you know, cabinet. If I need my line of credit, say, we got this million dollars, I gotta pay half of it, right? Jonathan, I've been on this last one, but before, the manager's office is well aware of what's going on. I, I don't arbitrarily borrow, say, okay, over the line of credit. And that's, that's where we are. That's why I talked to Jonathan on this one, I said, we're, you know, we got eight hundred thousand dollars, I've got two hundred thousand left, and I got over four hundred thousand dollars of bills to make. We gotta have some money.
So maybe this also, so we know we need the seven hundred, that's, well, we know that's the request. Well, what I'm saying, that's the request right now. I think what the councilman, correct me if I'm wrong, is saying, at one point in time during this, this year, it was three hundred? Was.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty.
That was last year.
Twenty twenty-three, it was three hundred. And I think what the councilman is saying, at that point in time, how did we borrow that additional seven hundred thousand dollars? Was it because there was no revenue coming in, because there were, we had no monies paying us?
Well.
Like, how did that seven hundred thousand stop?
We borrowed the other seven hundred thousand dollars, 'cause there were, between now and May fifteenth, a tax come in, all right? The revenue coming in, but it's not coming in where we need it. If I need the hundred thousand dollars today and I gotta wait two weeks to get it, I gotta have something, give me the next two weeks.
Okay, so forgive me, it might, it would just be my misunderstanding. So we, we borrowed seven hundred thousand dollars to get us to the million, right? Was that, and do you remember?
Well, the three hundred thousand was last year.
Okay, so from January to date, we borrowed, we drew down seven hundred thousand?
That's from July one.
July one, that's what I was trying to find out, so it's from the, okay. So from July one to date, it was the seven hundred thousand. But we've not gotten any money in yet to pay that back?
Well, from July one to November fifteenth, when we borrowed the money.
Fifteenth, there's no, right. Correct.
Taxes came in, we paid it back, okay?
Okay, so then.
Now, we're going from November fifteenth to May fifteenth.
Right, but bear with me one second, and, and, and so, I mean, I understand it, but I really wanna talk it simply so that maybe every.
Yeah, yeah.
So we end up, we paid it back, we don't owe any money. The million started again.
Correct.
Over what period of time was that million borrowed again? Do we remember, do you know that?
Yeah, we borrowed it from July one to November fifteenth, and the taxes came in.
Mm-hmm.
It was all paid back.
So, December?
Right. Then we went a little bit, we had, after we paid it back, we made as far as we could, then we had to borrow money to get to where we are now.
Do you remember when you borrowed that money then?
I can get dates off the top of my.
Approximately, you don't, I, I, I just try, I'm just trying to figure.
Well, it was probably, I'm gonna say sometime first of February, something like that.
Okay.
You know, when you got a hundred and forty thousand dollars in payroll.
Mm-hmm.
Every two week, two weeks now, plus all the invoices that come in, that's a lot of money every week.
So like every six months, this is the issue?
Yeah, it's a lot of money between.
That's what I'm hearing, it's every six months.
Because I bring up a stack of warrants here for council meeting, sometimes there are a lot.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman.
Have we ever not been able to pay back?
No.
When we were talking to recent houses, and is there a way to get ahead of it?
I don't.
It's, I know it's not gonna be as simple.
I think more installments, you know, you'd have a better cash flow.
Yeah, and more install the payments and, yeah. It, there will be, but it's not going to happen, I will tell you, it's not gonna happen within a year. It's gonna be a while to regulate where the money's coming, making sure that funds sit, decide how investment should be, so, and that's what we're looking at, but it's not gonna happen in thirty days.
But Jonathan said, it could be more installing, but then you're talking about four water, four tax payments.
Right, but, so we have to look at that sensibly and all of us discuss it, but, um, and come up with options. If we do A, this is what's going to happen, B, this is what's going to happen, and in the meanwhile, still do our deep dive to see what's really going on here, because we, as everybody said, we're picking up from, you know, former city managers and their policies and procedures, and now we're looking at them, um, right now. So, any further discussion here, or should we move on the vote? Okay, I have a motion, uh, yes.
I was gonna say, I, I, Clark, with anything you've said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor of this because I think we need to pay our bills. And I'm highly invested in whatever that investigative work is gonna take to get us all on the same page and understanding what's going on. I suspect that a problem that's taken this long to make is not gonna be sorted in a month. It's gonna take us some time to get the answers to the questions, and that we're gonna have to dog this every month until it does.
And, and to that, it's not going to take a month to answer it, but it's definitely expediting.
I hear it.
I will tell you that this is not going to be, uh, a year or two to figure out what we're looking at. And then we will be back and get everything, all the policies and procedures in place. I have a motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post say nay.
Nay.
I have it, and the motion is carried. Next, I, now, to do that, I believe you need signatures.
Oh, I got the original here.
You do not have to sign.
No.
Hey, next item on the agenda is comments by members of the public. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are still present online. And that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings, that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council. To conduct orderly and efficient meetings, I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the public guidelines when participating in the meeting, um, thank you for that. Um, Mr. R, please identify yourself, you will have three minutes.
Sure.
Um, Jonathan, will you?
And if I need more time, I'll just do it the next time and the next time. The, the, I, I looked at, um, and didn't wanna burden you with all the agenda that you had on the last meeting. I looked at the general ledger for the first nine months of, um, the, um, of, of this year's budgetary period, so from July first until March thirtieth. So from July first until March thirtieth is nine months. And you're never gonna be able to balance budgets and therefore not have additional debt unless people stay within their budget. So the city manager, for instance, salaries were budgeted at fifty-four thousand, seven, two, nine. And we know that some of it's somewhere else. But the actual money that you've already spent in nine months for those, for that, that amount of salary, which is about forty percent of the actual salaries that two people make, is you spent fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty. You spent a hundred and five percent of the budgeted amount in nine months. When you should have spent a hundred percent in twelve months, you've already spent a hundred and five percent. Now, there may have been some strange things. We had one city manager leave. We had a temporary city manager. We didn't have any city manager for a while, and we had a new city manager. Okay, so maybe that's unusual. But then you get to the police administration. Travis, he always says I pick on him. But he, he comes up next, and it's easy to be concentrated on it. So in police, police administration, eighty-nine point six, seven percent is already spent. Should have been seventy-five percent, just about. In nine months, you should spend seventy-five percent. It's, it's already, just about ninety percent. In police patrol, we've already spent ninety-six point three percent of the money. You only got another three point seven percent to spend in the next three months if you were gonna have a balanced budget. Well, you know your patrolmen's salaries will take you way over that. So people come in and they say, we need this much money in our police budget. And then they're spending more than it. The police dispatch has spent eighty-eight percent of its budgeted amount. And if you go through, obviously I won't bore you, well, street maintenance under Tom's budget, he's already spent a hundred and three percent of his street maintenance budget. What do you got left for the next three months? Nothing if you were gonna stay within your budget. And you might say, well, you know, nine months is not a good time. But I have the budget for the full last year, and that was over budget. I think the police budget, if I recall, was over by about a hundred and twenty percent. This year, it will be over by, if, if you're spending at that rate, another thirty-three and a third percent, you'd be over by a hundred and thirty-three percent. So either we're not being accurate in our guesses to begin with, and please don't, I don't want them to be higher to begin with, just so that they can meet this. But stay within your budget. Or come to the council midway, when you, or not even mid, when you start to have a problem, it becomes obvious. And then negotiate with the city manager. I mean, do something to let us know because it, you're, you're gonna be behind the eight ball already when you start next year. Your expenses have exceeded, in many instances, already at the nine-month level. It, it's just not sustainable. And so the, the people that we've laud for doing a good job need to also look at what they're spending.
Thank you for coming.
And grant money, one last thing. Grant, I don't, okay. Fine, next time.
Steve, Mike.
Now, you're, just.
Next time.
Okay, and thank you for that comment. And this is for the people who've signed up. And I just, you know, don't usually respond to whoever. I do want to address something there with the budgets, okay? The city manager and I are looking at some of those issues. Grant monies, they're not included in some of those, and we're readjusting how those should be allocated and things. So your budget use may be skewed a bit there, too. As well as sometimes you do finish using your budget in the nine months and you don't. But we know what to look for. We're totally looking at the expenses on that. So just keep that in mind. Your.
Pamela, it's from City Newport. Clark raised the issue of leachate, which has always been Paul Minette and Melissa Patterson's. Oh, my God, if I had a dog, if we just kept the leachate, everything would peachy-cream wonderful. That's a totally bogus issue. The leachate was stopped five years ago, and it was stopped by At Two Fifty, who believed it was insane running leachate straight into the lake here because it couldn't be filtered, treated for what they claimed it was going to be treated. So that was five years ago. So using that as an excuse is absolutely absurd.
Thank you.
None of where.
Okay, I, I can't. I had to finish. We, we still have business to do.
I understand.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is new business, okay? President Fashan?
No, thank you.
Councilman Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilman Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilman Alfred Chase?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
No permits? No permits? Businesses?
We'll be lucky.
No.
Oh, it's gonna be?
Vendor permits need to be done right now.
Weren't they, didn't they even, those vendor permits?
Yeah, I've already pulled the council. Everybody's in agreement with that. I'm just waiting for them to get a note from a guy on the Derby Road where they can
Madam Mayor.
Give permission from the owner to set up up there.
Okay.
Jonathan wanted that in the file.
In the file, but my question is, do, we could approve those if they need them so that they can set up as long as you've already identified where. So maybe I misunderstood. I thought that we were gonna bring it on.
Yeah, I'll be fine as long as we just put it in the file once we receive it.
Right, so we can approve those if you wanna get those down, if you wanna bring it on. Yeah, right?
I wanna say something about it.
Yeah, we're going to, but I just wanna make sure we're talking about the same ones. Wanna hear what he wants to have approved. I'm never gonna bring up the ones that, go ahead. Which ones do you want approved for barbecue?
I can go and get them right now if you wanna do it that way.
Yeah, we'll just take like a five-minute recess.
I pulled the council. Everybody was in agreement to do it that way.
I'm sorry, what's he mean, pulled the council?
Okay, so, okay, so go ahead. I'm gonna.
I, I don't understand what you're saying. You pulled the council?
I emailed everybody and talked to those guys and told them that they can't just have the city of Newport. They got to have, they got to say city events and a permanent place. Primary spot would be able to deal with them with Derry.
So I'm.
Everybody should have got an email on that.
Sorry, I get my email at night. Last night I got home at ten oh nine after the fire. I haven't seen it. So I just have a question. Isn't a vendor permit for anywhere in the city?
No, if you have it anywhere in the city, they can go anywhere in the city and set that thing up. That's why I had them change it to city events, which would be Garden of Fire, Proudy Beach, if something's going on. And their primary place would be up at the Oldham River Dairy on the Derby Road. Instead of being the Eagles, where it was last year, because then brought up the question about the smoke. I talked to those guys and said, well, we're gonna go up to Derby Road anyway.
Right.
So they're not setting up.
So every single vendor has to identify where they're gonna be?
They should. There's a slot on there that says location.
So they can't set up on Main Street next week if they saw a child?
Well, it says city events. So if there's something on Main Street, like Wendy's in the waterfront, they have Uber wagons down on Main Street.
Yep.
That's just, that's an event going on in the city.
What if they wanted to, so I'll tell you that I spent two hours with these people today. I got to work at twelve twenty.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna pick on the guy making pizza up at the old Louisa's building. Is that where he has to be? He can't go any, that's not a city event?
No.
Okay, so I, I'm, I'm very astonished that you, I heard your voicemails. I'm very astonished that you asked them for a permission slip from the landowner. They don't need a permission. That's between them and whoever owns the land.
I did, I asked that because Jonathan asked me to ask.
I, I asked for that.
You did.
I did, I did ask for that. Because to me, the city events were gonna be on city property. It was a city-sponsored event. So if there was something kinda outside of that realm, I just asked it. Because we're not granting permission for them to set up on private property because if we haven't connected with the property owner and they just set up on someone's private property.
That's between them.
But if we've issued them the permit to do so.
A vendor permit.
Correct.
To go anywhere in the city, so they could come to your house, your new house, if they wanted, if you allowed them. They could come to your house and set up. They could come to my house. So I'm just trying to find, right, fairness, fairness. So I've noticed progressively, over the years, there's more people on Main Street during, when this is on the waterfront is great. They're coning the spaces, they're pulling. I agree. It's a city event, when it's on the water. I can tell you, these people wanna set up maybe in a parking spot on Main Street and serve breakfast. Why, why are we prohibiting them? Somebody's trying to make a living. So I just wanna be clear. Why do we need to know where they're gonna be? It's not our business. We're giving a vendor permit. So I, before the meeting, I asked Ms. Lads, these people may wanna set up at the farmer's market. What do they need to do? Well, because the farmer's market people, for lack of a better word, are, have a deal with the city. And this vendor, or any vendor, simply needs to contact the person and say, I wanna come. And for a small fee, they can go to me. I'm just having a hard time understanding why we're asking, let's, come to Pizza Guy. Is that where he's, said he's gonna be? Do you have a permission slip from the owner of that property? Okay, so everybody has to be treated fair. So these people wanna set up and do breakfast. They want, they're interested in the state building. There's dozens of people in, in there that would love to have a breakfast. So I can't speak for them, but I'm having a hard time wondering why it's not here and why we need a permission slip. They can set up at my house tomorrow morning if they want to, as long as I have a vendor permit.
But I guess what if the landowner didn't want them to?
That's between.
But they, let's say they set up. I'm just playing devil's advocate, right? They, they could have gone up there and said, I'll set up on my property and said, well, the city gave me permission to set up anywhere in the city at any time.
You could, you, if, if, I'm, I know, no, you're, you're right.
Right, and then there was no communication between me and that vendor, and they're gonna come say, the city said I could go anywhere I want. I can set up on your property.
Well, so I think that doesn't go that far. I, I think it's not gonna go that far. But I think what the councilman is saying is the, the city is not required to go and say, give me permission from Johnny, so give me permission from Suzie's. There's legalities. No one's coming on your property and setting up without your authority. But what I'm saying is so, but I think what I'm hearing right now is we should have the city permits that could be approved for them to do it. If they go on your property, then you definitely can have an issue with them and.
Call trams.
Deal, deal with it. You know, what I'm saying is we.
I thought I wouldn't, right.
Hi, guys. I think what I'm hearing is, okay, that we do the permits. We should not be interfering with one-on-one.
No.
Okay, if there's an issue, the city will, will deal with that, councilman.
So catching up as usual, but I, I'll just say, Clark, that my concern is that I'm, I'm struggling hard to get the businesses on Main Street to come along with allowing vendors on the street to carry actual events. Because their argument is, we're paying significant taxes to operate in this location, and we don't wanna have to constantly compete against the folks who can buy a permit for three hundred bucks for the year and come and set up anytime they want. So I think there's a hierarchy to them. I don't think we're just saying, you have carte blanche, you can set up in any parking space. Assuming we were actually enforcing the two-hour limit on those parking spaces, right? That you can set up on any parking space and do your thing. I think what I've been trying to say is, no, we, there are times when it's appropriate because we're trying to create a community spirit to have those trucks there. And I'm, I'm, I'm taking some heat for that.
So I think the bottom line right now is, do you have those city permits that you want us to approve or not approve? Is what I'm hearing, right?
I have them downstairs.
How long?
I mean, I, I emailed all the council. Everybody was in agreement to.
But I'm just saying, so.
If you wanna look at the permit, I'll go down and get it.
No, I'm just saying that we can, if you make, we can make a motion to approve them.
Make a motion to approve Freddie's barbecue and Freddie's breakfast.
That, that's, that's what I'm saying. Can we do them together?
Yeah, that's fine.
Can I have a motion to approve Freddie's barbecue and Freddie's breakfast?
No, it's not Freddie's breakfast.
What is it?
Buggies.
Oh, Buggies breakfast.
So.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of you say nay. Ayes have it and the motion is carried.
Okay.
Okay. New business. City manager?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, I just want, I apologize. What? Did I, did I pass something?
No, okay.
Okay, so I have a meeting on Friday, April thirteenth, with the governor and some of his cabinet, cabinet members to discuss potentials for Newport. And I've invited the city manager to join me at that meeting, so I wanted you to know all that. Next item on the agenda is old business. President Fashan?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Alfred Chase?
Thank you.
Treasurer Johnson, city manager. I just wanna clarify something from old business, just to make it clear. There was an issue brought up, and it was, needs to be clarified, about what was on the website last round with the voted upon, I'm sorry, procedures and the old ones. And, and, okay, sure, go right ahead.
So, Jonathan, you brought up a great point about the two rules of procedure. So after we had heard that, I spoke with the mayor, and we went back and looked at the packet to, to just verify. And so the old rules of procedure were actually part of the minutes of the.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, but just let him get it on.
And then, yes, that, so the, the actual rules of procedure that they approved were following. And just wanna make sure that they were indeed both in there and.
I, I, I went back in for a second inspection and, and I found that to be the case.
Good, okay.
It was confusing, though, I will say.
Okay, next item on the agenda is adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting at six oh seven eleven?
No, I can't move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it.